Yes.
Welcome to the April fifteenth meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education. The meeting will now come to order. The meeting will now come to order. I'm going to ask for our student board member, Ms. Hader, to please lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gorski, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Ms. Armenio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman. Ms. De Mayo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman. Mrs. Cole Poniewich. Mr. Nostine. Mr. Poy. Mr. Preziosso. Mr. Ryback. Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Zarneski. Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April tenth, two thousand and fifteen, at all schools, at the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. At this time, we'll have our student rep give us a report.
Thank you. So, the middle school's Falcon Jazz Band recently performed in the Terrell Middle School Jazz Festival, where they were part of a program of the top, the eight top schools in central Jersey. The middle school also took second place as a team at the Seventh Annual Middle School Science Bowl at Saint Joseph's High School. The middle school students recently concluded their production of Grease, and we want to congratulate them on a fabulous show. Throughout March, the middle school Builders Club collected non-perishables for Mc Foods, and the food drive was a huge success. And then finally, their basketball team is the twenty fifteen champions of the Hoop Group Tournament, and they beat some of the best teams from across the state. And in the high school, the MTHS Footlights Club is presenting their annual spring show, April twenty-third to twenty-sixth, and this year's production is Young Frankenstein. There will be an autism Walkathon and Free Family Carnival on May seventeenth in an effort to support autism awareness and Walk for a Difference. Eight DECA members are heading off to the International Career Development Conference to compete against people from all different countries and business areas. And two DECA members were honored with leadership awards, one through DECA ROTC and another recognized as an emerging leader. And spring sports just kicked off and are beginning to play their games, so good luck to all teams. And then finally, the Monroe Township High School Band and Chorus are leaving tomorrow to attend a Music in the Parks Program in Virginia.
Thank you, Ms. Hader.
At this time, we have a presentation. Mr. Goodall, the high school principal, will be talking a little bit about the AP program here at the high school. Mr. Goodall.
Thank you, Mr. Ventrello. As last summer, I attended a big portion of the board's philosophy in developing its board goals, and I understood that the AP program was a program that we wanted to take a look at. Mr. Washington, if you could put that up. For those in the audience who are unfamiliar with the Advanced Placement Program or AP program, it's the most rigorous and challenging courses that a high school student can take. By taking the AP test at the end of the year, students are able to get advanced placement in colleges, to possibly receive college credit, or both. So, it's important that we have these programs for our students as they pursue the finest universities and colleges that we have. College Board, which oversees the AP program, has over thirty AP courses that they offer students, and that is all connected to their interest level and what they want to pursue as part of college majors or careers. All of our teachers are trained by College Board. They take a week-long training as part of their professional development. And all of our courses are approved and audited by College Board. Each year, the teacher has to submit a course syllabus to be approved, and all of our teachers routinely do that with help with our district supervisors and principal. Currently, our high school offers twenty-eight AP courses in our program of studies. When I first arrived here as a vice principal, we only offered twelve. As part of a movement from central office to high school, and with the board's support, we collectively added sixteen additional AP courses over the years. We, as part of that process to embed our kids in the culture of AP, mandated that they take the AP test at the conclusion of the course. And by doing so, the board agreed to finance all of the AP tests. We take a very inclusive and accessible approach in trying to get all of our students college and career-ready for participation in AP courses. Some districts have a very strict guideline who could take an AP course. We do have prerequisites. We do have some grade standards that students have to meet. But for the most part, kids can get access to AP courses by way of a waiver if they don't meet that criteria. If there's someone I'm particularly concerned about whether they're getting in over their head, I will meet with the student and their parent and their guidance counselor. But for the most, we have a very accessible AP program, which is what we want. With your support, Board President and Past, our AP courses have made it possible for us to reach that top one hundred in New Jersey last year, achieve AP honor roll, and also be recognized by U.S. News and World Report, number thirty-nine school in the state of New Jersey. That is a major criteria in all of those publications. So, it was very good that we did in expanding our AP program. Those are from our annual report, the last three years, for all of our tests, some results where students received a three or better, which the last year, we want to do a little bit better than that, but also by adding all these courses and exposing new students to the AP experience. You know, our score has dipped a little bit, but we're working on that with articulation up and down in the high school and to the middle school. So, we continue to work on that. We're not satisfied. If you remember, a few years ago, if you were in the audience or on the board, we had a number of our top ten students come up to the board and say they wanted more access to AP courses. So, we made changes to our program of studies, our core sequencing, and we allowed for our students to have more access. So, grade-nine students moving forward have access to AP courses, where in the past, it was, you know, at Monroe strictly eleventh and twelfth grade. So, we made those changes. We recently, as part of a budget proposal, felt that, and I'll just use my words, take the training wheels off of our students and no longer mandate that they take the test. We did that a number of years ago with previous central office administration. I was a part of that process. We felt that we needed to mandate the test for our students to get the full experience. So, with that and trying to be more cost-efficient, that was a board savings in the current budget for next year of fifty-three thousand dollars. So, we felt it was the appropriate time to do that. And we feel our students are embedded in the AP culture now, and they know that it's the pathway to the best colleges and universities. Those are some of our most popular and most rigorous AP courses. Last year, the results of students who took that test with a score of three or greater, those are the percentages of the students who were successful. So, they were very, very high. We do have some courses who students new to AP typically take that we're working on to improve those scores as well. But I just wanted to show you some highlights of, you know, we're doing pretty well in some of those very high-profile AP courses. Gentlemen, come on up. This is the reason why we do things here at Monroe Township High School. I have to my left, I have the Navy behind me. Eric Houlihan is a great young man. He's just accepted an appointment in the fall at the United States Naval Academy. He's currently ranked eighth in our class.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I know he's been involved in our AP program. I ask not only I want him to be recognized by everybody in the room, but I wanted him to come up and speak a little bit how AP has helped him. So, Eric, and thank you. You came right from the baseball game.
Thank you. Well, basically, I've known since I wanted, that I wanted to go to the Naval Academy since about eighth grade. I knew it's a competitive school and very rigorous. So, I wanted to challenge myself as most, as much as I can. I wanted to make myself competitive against all the other applicants. And I thought AP would be a great way to do that. I know AP scores, you can submit them to colleges, and it'll count as credit, and you can test out of those classes. The Naval Academy doesn't do that. They don't accept AP scores. And so, that's not why I did it. I didn't do it just to try and get out of other college classes. I took it to better prepare myself for what I was going to get into. I took AP Calculus, AB and BC. I'm taking AP Physics. And I did that because I want to be an engineering major. So, I felt those would prepare me the best. And I want to be in the Navy, so I took AP History, one and two. Just if I'm going to serve my country, I might as well know how it started. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to Eric and his parents. I know they're very proud. But if you look a little bit without breaking his confidentiality, he allowed me to show, he didn't want to show all the grades, but he did allow that. If you look in the ninth grade, because we didn't make those changes to the program of studies, Eric was prohibited from taking some of the AP courses. But our current freshmen, ninth and tenth grade, we've made those changes. So, you know, he did get into the Naval Academy. Must have been doing something right back in ninth grade as well. But, you know, that's synonymous of what our ninth-grade high-flying students were taking. It was all honors courses. And then in tenth grade, he, you know, started taking the first introductory kind of AP course, which was US One. At this time, I'd like to call up another student, Peter Gasko. Pete's ranked twenty-second in the class, and his college choices right now are Cornell or Rutgers. His very familiar last name and very proud mom in the audience is math supervisor Sue Gasko. And, you know, he doesn't have to say that his mother made him take all these AP courses, but if he wants to, he can do that. But I asked him to come. Pete's ranked twenty-second in the class. He's done very, very well here. But I don't know, in the past, our twenty-second-ranked students were getting into Ivy League schools, but now they are. So, Pete, if you could talk about your AP experience.
Yeah. So, Cornell, the AP classes were a big decision with Cornell because they helped me, helped prepare me for the rigors of the college courses, and they helped make me look more competitive against the other students. And just within our school and within all the other schools who are applying to Cornell. Cornell, they only, they have like a less than fifteen percent acceptance rate in their agricultural program is number one in globally for their plant sciences and animal sciences, which is what I wanted to study. I wanted to study horticulture and just like expand on family business, basically. So, the AP courses, it definitely helped me get accepted into that. And so, I took the AP Economics. That helped me get a business sense. And the Calculus, I liked taking math in, so that helped me become prepared for the rigors of the college classes.
Very nice.
Again, I want to thank both young men. We're very, very proud of them. But certainly, we're proud of everything that we do here. The AP program has really expanded over the years with collaborative effort between the board, the administrative team, the teachers, and the whole community. We've really expanded our offerings to kids. So, reaching our goals, our kids are applying and gaining acceptance to more competitive colleges and universities as a result to our AP program. We've been continually recognized in the last year or two as being a top school, and that has to do with our course offerings in AP. That's a major criteria for that. And I know the board is looking at being more cost-efficient. And I think the move from moving from the mandated and fully-funded AP testing, it's the right time for us to do that. And I know that was a significant savings for the budget for next year. And I think our kids are more than prepared to know that, you know, that test is a big part of the AP experience. So, if there are any questions or comments? Yes, Doc.
I know it's a little unusual for schools to offer AP courses to freshmen and sophomores. How long have we been doing that? And what kind of a track record are we finding that those kids are doing?
We're actually finding, in front of me, I don't have the results, but in speaking to the teachers, or some of our freshman students have been very, very successful, have gotten scores of four and five on tests. I can get more specific data for the board if they wanted to see that. I believe this is our third year doing that. We go down to the two middle schools, talk about not taking Honors Bio, which was a prereq for going into AP Bio, before we made those changes when our top-ten students appeared at the board and demanded it. But our freshmen have been, you know, we had some reservations about it. We talked to them. We give them an entrance exam in the summer, an assessment. And then, you know, depending on seat availability, because it is a popular course, they're awarded a seat in the program, and they've been very, very successful. And we haven't looked back.
So, it's mainly AP Bio that the freshmen are taking?
Mainly AP Bio.
Okay, now if...
And that was the big course they identified as a big help for them gaining access to the other AP courses, by getting that out of the way in the ninth-grade year.
Okay, now, if a student doesn't take the AP Bio in their freshman year, can they pick it up later in high school?
Yes, they can. And they typically will take Honors Bio in the ninth grade and then take it in tenth or eleventh grade.
Okay, all right. And what about tenth grade? Are there any AP courses that our tenth graders are taking?
AP Chemistry on a limited basis. That's a little bit more difficult. They're taking the Honors Chemistry beforehand.
Okay.
There's also AP Environmental Science, AP US One. Those are typical, I don't want to call them entry-level, but those are the classes that kids who have their first exposure to AP have traditionally enrolled in those classes.
Okay. And finally, are there some, a few courses that we have where maybe the performance is not quite what we'd like for it to be? And what are those courses? And what are we trying to do to improve that?
If, I would say we have some courses that especially are newer courses where we haven't had the performance. I prefer not to say that in this venue, because I don't want to put scrutiny on the teacher or anything like that. But we are certainly working with them. We're having our articulation with what is expected from the eighth-grade teachers coming up into the high school and from grade levels nine through twelve here. So, if someone was going into AP Chemistry, we're talking to those Honors Chemistry teachers, what is expected from AP students to get our scores up. I appreciate that. Yes, Steve.
Rob, it's not a question. I just really want to thank you and your staff for creating those kinds of possibilities for our students to enroll in AP classes, get that experience. That's what we need to become one of the top one hundred schools in, you know, in U.S. News and World Report. And I thank you for that. I think that we have a lot of students, and I thank their parents also for that kind of support at home. I think it's just important, and I'd like to keep it going.
Thank you, Steve. And if I could just add, it was a very collaborative effort from the board, the administrative team, parents, community. And we added a substantial amount of courses over a short period of time. So, it was a great effort by everybody.
Any other questions? Well, we do thank you, Mr. Goodall, for that program of presentation. And I'd like to congratulate Eric and Peter for how well they've done in high school and the colleges that they have gotten accepted to. And we wish you well next year after graduation.
Another round.
Thank you again, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
Okay, at this time, we'll be going into our first public forum. I'd like to remind you that during the first public session, anyone speaking, you're restricted to items that are on the agenda of this meeting. And if you can possibly identify the particular item that you're addressing before you get into making your remarks or questions, that would be helpful to us. If you have any other questions or comments that do not pertain to tonight's agenda, you can bring those up during our second public session later this evening. When coming to the microphone, we ask that you state your name, your place of residence, and if you should have any group affiliation. Your statement is restricted to three minutes, and that applies even to statements of a complimentary nature. And any speaker is asked to speak on the same topic only once. If you want to speak on a second topic, that's fine. You can come up to the microphone later after your first three minutes have been expended. And all statements are to be directed to the presiding officer, which is me. And you're not to address your individual questions to individual board members. Your appreciation, your cooperation in these guidelines will be appreciated. And at this time, the floor is now open to the public forum. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment or question? Okay, seeing no movement from the audience, we will then close the first public session and move on to the approval of minutes. We have a lot of minutes to be approved tonight. All the members of the board receive copies of these minutes in advance. And I would propose that we accept all minutes by a voice vote together as a group instead of individually, unless there's any questions or corrections about specific minutes.
How do you abstain to one of them, or two of them, or three of them?
Okay, all right. If you have to abstain, then, so we'll go through it individually, Mr. Kaufman? Okay, that's fine.
Good idea, though.
Yeah, I was just trying to expedite things.
I could abstain in group.
Okay, all right. So, then I would move that we accept the meetings of the public board meeting on January fourteenth. Nostine. Any questions or comments? In favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Have to abstain from February three, four, five, and six.
We didn't get to that one yet. We're doing these individually. That's okay. Okay, so no abstentions on January fourteenth. Okay, closed session, meeting of January fourteenth, and move that we accept those minutes?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? The minutes of the special board of education meeting on January twenty-first?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Change. PM has to be changed to AM on the time of back into open session.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
And Mr. Braverman.
Oh, and Braverman. The minutes of the closed session meeting of January twenty-first? Questions or comments? Corrections?
Correction, same correction.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Lou and Braverman. The minutes of the special public board meeting of February the third?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ryback and Kaufman. The minutes of the closed session meeting of February third? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ryback and Kaufman. Minutes of the special board meeting of February the fourth? I don't know why that says organization meeting.
Did we organize?
Okay, that's what I thought. Any other questions or comments on that one?
We need a second on that.
Oh, we don't have a second on that one? Oh, Jill, okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ryback and Kaufman. The minutes of the closed session meeting on February fourth?
Second.
Any corrections or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ryback and Kaufman. The minutes of the special board ed meeting on February fifth?
Second.
Corrections or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Braverman, Ryback, and Kaufman. The minutes of the closed session meeting on February fifth?
Second.
Corrections or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ryback. Okay, the minutes of the special board meeting on February sixth?
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Kaufman, Ryback, and Braverman. Okay, the minutes of the closed session meeting on February the sixth?
Second.
Questions or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Kaufman, Braverman, and Ryback. The minutes of the special board meeting on February the tenth?
Second.
Comments or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And finally, the minutes of the closed session meeting on February tenth? Do we have a second? All, any comments or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, for the purposes of the public, you might be wondering why there were so many meetings. It was during those meetings that your board of education was conducting interviews of candidates for the superintendent's position. I will have a comment to make about that a little bit later this evening. At this time, do we have any committee reports? Any committee reports? Mr. Kaufman?
So, I can actually say something of value, right? Abstain. So, we had a very full agenda tonight, hour and a half meeting. We went over a couple of programs that are going to be coming up. One is related to Pals for Life, which is a wonderful program that I'm sure we're going to have probably the material out on the website, and I'm not going to take up a lot of time. But it has to do with students with special needs, collaborating with other students, and working together on a whole host of activities, as well as a Veterans Appreciation Day, which is coming up on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. We'll post the information that's out there. We're going to have a lot of events related to students and some veterans and current enlisted people in all branches of the military coming to our district and, you know, doing different events with some, I guess, activities related to contributions to the Wounded Warriors Fund. So, very exciting stuff going on related to this special event, I guess, at the Friday before Memorial Day, which is Friday, May twenty-second. So, we'll post the information related to that out on our website. We also had an update on a one-to-one initiative program related to our technology footprint, and we'll be bringing some materials before the finance committee. The survey said, after, as many of you know, we had a technology fair recently. We've had some technology group meetings talking about what's going to be the best platform to move forward. technology group meetings talking about what's going to be the best platform to move forward, and the votes are all in after the analysis has been done. We're going to be sticking with the iPad platform moving forward. Apple did a solid for this district and probably a good thing for their company by almost dropping the price of their iPads in half, making them competitive to devices that were much less capable. So that was a great thing for us, getting in on that technology platform for a very, very competitive price. So we're pretty excited about that, and more to come as we move forward to the finance committee on talking about the dollars and cents. We had a presentation on the tag and clustering grouping effort that's going on by Lori McConnell, as mentioned before in a prior meeting. This is a new effort that I think Lori said she will be discussing at maybe the next Board of Ed meeting to go into a lot of the details, so I won't take up a lot of time here. But it's pretty interesting to talk about how students are going to be broken down into different groupings and clustered together, so we have a better learning environment for really everybody, but especially talking about some of our super gifted children and how we're going to integrate that in our classrooms moving forward. So we'll be seeing a presentation at the next board meeting. There was also a discussion around some changes to our Henry Riklis Memorial Holocaust Committee program that we have, and they're introducing a new Adopt a Survivor program where we're going to be having, which we kind of already do anyway, some Holocaust survivors working with our students on a variety of events. A suggestion was also made that we're going to try and videotape and archive some of these special events, like the Holocaust Adopt a Survivor program, as well as the Veterans Day, with the idea that some of these folks are getting a little bit older in age, and we may not have them around indefinitely. And if we start videotaping some of these events that we have and, you know, putting them maybe on our website in a time capsule type of thing, we can archive them and have them historically preserved digitally for forever, right, and available to anybody who wants to come and see the events and some of the things that we took, we had taken place, and see how we can progress the program over time. Just one thing I didn't think about, and I'm going to make sure we got all the correct sign-offs on being able to post when people are videotaped, all the terms and conditions and sign-offs that we need. Also talked about, there were some emails floating around a while ago about why does Monroe Township not have a boys volleyball team? We are amongst a very small number of Group V schools that does not have a boys volleyball team. We did talk about it, and because of budget constraints, we're a little bit limited on being able to expand this opportunity here. Doug Poy brought up a good comment about, well, why is it that some districts have lower cost per unit for sporting events, and Monroe has a higher cost and less things to offer? One note that Greg brought up in the meeting, which was a good point, some of these districts have a pay-to-play program, which dramatically reduces costs across the board. And we'll get some other information regarding that type of stuff and how things break down across the different schools, and why are some schools heavy and light on some of the costs. And again, things like pay-to-play and some other things like maybe stipends may have a big factor in some of these dollars and cents as you try and compare what we do with other districts. So more to come on that. And unfortunately, we only gave Mr. Ryback three minutes, but we are all going to go back and revisit. He brought up a very good, interesting concept about creating some summer programs or summer camps, both academic and sports, and potentially see where we might be able to offer a value add back to the community in certain subject matter areas, whether it's academically based for who knows what, or sports-based, if there are opportunities that we might have to allow our community members to pay for different courses or programs that we can offer through our facilities that are already open for the summer anyway. We might as well see if we can have opportunities to leverage, you know, creating potentially maybe new jobs, more opportunity for staff members, and bringing some more dollars and cents into the district as another enterprise fund, because Mike doesn't have enough enterprise funds to manage. So we figure we're going to give him something else to worry about. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Any other committee reports? Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on our interim superintendent, Mr. Ventrilo.
Mr. President, before I get into my report, I'd like to give an update on park testing. It seems that obviously, I'm sure everybody's aware of the fact that it seems like every day there's either another bill, or there's another newspaper article, or something on TV about park testing. So with that in mind, I just want to keep us all as transparent as possible. As of yesterday, we have had 320 parent refusals for students, and that's 320 opt-outs, if you will. Approximately 4,300 students, though, in grades three through 11 were assigned the park test, and we had approximately 320 opt-outs. That's certainly very commendable. So close to 4,000 of our own students then took the park exam. Our next round of park testing begins soon with the high school scheduled April 20th to the 30th. The middle school is scheduled April 27th through May 4th, and the elementary schools are scheduled April 27th through May 6th. And makeups take place after that. Parents should know if they opted out their child for the first round, a second letter, a second letter is not needed. Some legislative updates, as I said, that's out there. There's a new bill that would require any employees of the state contracted companies to undergo the same background checks as public school employees. Also, at this time, New Jersey lawmakers are already considering legislation that would guarantee students have the right to opt out with an alternative setting that has far-reaching implications for us and other school districts. And I believe the same request is already as a petition going to the State Board of Education. As a district, we are looking forward to the analysis of the data that will provide us with information of our own students' progress. I have one other update, and that update is our redistricting progress. Based on identified areas to be transitioned to a different school, parents and students will be receiving welcome letters from principals. These letters are expected to be mailed out on Friday, April 24th, so parents can at least expect those letters any time after that. Information and dates regarding student and parent orientations will be included in the principal's welcome letters. And principals are planning some really great activities for the kids, so they feel comfortable in their new surroundings. Everything will be done to ensure a smooth transition for the students, and again, keep an eye out for that letter after April 24th. If parents have any special concerns about their child, then they can reach out to either of the principals, the receiving or the sending principal, to make sure that obviously those accommodations are considered. Again, keep an eye out, as far as I know, April 24th for that welcome letter. At this time, onto my report. Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve personnel items number A through KK. Now, but I have a little bit of a test here for the board, is that there was a mistake, a typo mistake, as far as the number. So please be aware that it's A through KK. II on page 14 should be KK. II on page 14 is really KK. So this way the report is thorough.
Okay, so we are voting to approve the recommendations for items A through KK. I would assume that that does, that does not mean that there's any additional items that have been inserted. It was just a matter of-
That's all it was. That's correct.
Okay, just a typo typo situation. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Armenio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, personnel items A through KK passes.
For board action, Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve board action items number A through I. A through I.
No move.
Questions or discussions? Roll call vote?
Ms. Armenio?
On H, no. On B, 167, public participation in board meetings. And P, 8310, public records. R, 8310, public records. I feel that it is not sufficiently protecting the public in these policies, so I vote no for those. Everything else, I vote yes.
So noted. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes on all. I'm going to recuse H, P 1220, and I'm going to go for behind what's door, P 8320, and door R 8320.
So noted. Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes for everything except under H, and it's B 167. I have an issue with the fact that we're limiting the public participation to only speaking once on a topic, when in the past we've allowed that, and it's never really been an issue. I feel it's a solution in search of a problem.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items A through I passes.
Mr. President, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ventrilo. And at this time, we'll have a report and recommendations from business administrator, Mr. Gorski.
Thank you. Mr. Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through H be approved by consent roll call.
No move.
Is there a second? Any questions or discussions? Okay, Mr. Gorski, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Armenio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items A through H passes. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, I will be very brief. I'd like to update the entire board, as well as the public, in terms of our efforts to find a new superintendent for the Monroe School District. After many, many evenings and many, many hours, we were not successful in our first time out, being assisted by the New Jersey School Boards Association with the candidates that they presented to us. And therefore, we decided that we would make a second attempt and go with a different agency. We are working with Leadership Advantages. There are several gentlemen that head up that search team. They both have extensive experience with being superintendents, both here in New Jersey as well as New York State. They are also currently involved as professors or assistant deans at, one is at Monmouth University, and the other one is at Seton Hall in their educational programs. And the last conversation I had with Mr. Marasco, or Dr. Marasco, who is a former superintendent from Monroe from many, many years ago, is that they have been successful in quite a few applicants submitting the applications, and we're anticipating that the board will have access to those applications shortly after the end of this month. I believe their deadline for submission was the end of April. So we will be looking at the applications hopefully during the first week of May, and then setting up interviews for, beginning in the second week of May. I know that some of you do have commitments. That is understandable. However, I am hopeful that we will have sufficient numbers to, to screen the applications, resumes, and to select who we want to bring in for interviews, and then to begin the interview process. So that's all I have to say at this time. We are, we remain optimistic that we will have a new superintendent in place sometime by either the 1st of September or the end of September. So we're very optimistic with that, and our search team has also expressed that same optimism. That concludes my report. Is there any other board business that anyone wants to bring up? Mr. Ryback?
I just want to mention on a positive note that I was so happy I had the opportunity to see Greece at the middle school. It was an incredible production. It's hard to believe that middle school kids can do such a great job. It was absolutely professional, and I congratulate everyone in that entire school. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
So you're probably not going to be able to divulge too much, but I figure I got to ask. So in the last couple of months, you had like, just in the last couple of months, since January 6th, meetings for the new, right? To whatever extent you feel you can, is this an issue of not finding a qualified candidate or not coming to a consensus? Because those are two radically different problems.
I think we had many qualified candidates. I think all of the applications that we looked at, the candidates were qualified. In terms of the decision, though, it was a matter of sufficient consensus.
Is that something, no matter who you go with, you have to fix here?
Yes, absolutely agree.
Because I can't speak on this at all, you know.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, to discuss the following subject: harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This discussion, conducted in closed session, can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I would anticipate that this closed session will not extend beyond 10 minutes. So if you will wait, we will then return and have our second public forum. Thank you. Sorry.
Before we get into the next session of the board meeting, is that I just would like to acknowledge, we do have someone here. Matter of fact, our new head football coach, Mr. Dan Lee. Let's give him a round of applause, please. And thank you also for your family members coming out as well to support you. Thank you, Lee family.
Well, that answers my question as to who would the distinguished gentleman in the
jacket and tie was sitting in the audience. We don't typically get that. Okay, so as I was about to say, we will now go into our second public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, and I won't read through all the guidelines that I did previously. Just be conscious of those. As you come up to the mic, state your name, address, any affiliation that you might have. Anyone? No one?
Pizza night at the Sportsman's Club.
No, no, we want Mark. We want Mark. Way to go. Thank you.
All right.
I'm going home if Mark doesn't speak.
Please, please. All right, then I will close the second public forum. Our next scheduled board meeting will be on Monday, April 27th, at 7:00 PM here at the high school. I now move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. The meeting is now closed. Thank you.